Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 21, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Here.
Councilmember Novak?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong? Councilmember Carlson?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
One absent Armstrong.
Thank you. Next item is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I would move to adopt the agenda with a couple of modifications. We are going to, number one, remove the proclamation, item number one, for the Coon Rapids Competition Cheer Team from tonight, remove that from the agenda. And we're going to take item number three, the lawful gambling report for the Community Strength Foundation, and move that to new business.
Second? Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Is there any other discussion or corrections on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that agenda is adopted. And just to be clear, we're just moving the cheer proclamation out to the next meeting because they were concerned about the snow. So, as are a lot of people, I think. All right. Item two is to approve the minutes of the February 7 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to approve the said minutes.
Second?
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. So now we have one, two, three, four, five items on our consent agenda, starting with the fourth item on this evening's agenda. That's item one on our consent agenda. That's to receive the 2022 year-end gambling expenditure report. And we've gotten just an update today on the Matt Bandit's numbers. So those would be corrected in the minutes. But we've received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for July through December showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 16 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at 9:48. So it's actually nine, it went down?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. 9:47, 607.91. There's about a $60-ish difference in one of them, which makes that number different than what was originally provided.
I was expecting the number to go up. That's why I was throwing off there.
No.
Okay, all right. So 947,607.91 with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at 888,536. And the reported expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids for this period were 856,555.36. The total combined net profit for all of 2022 was reported at 1,718,579.37 with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, at 1,694,510.85. And the reported expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids for the year, and I hope everybody's jotting this down quickly, 1,657,708.85. All organizations achieved the 60% expenditure requirement within the trade area for the year, with the exception of the American Legion. And the American Legion Gambling Organization has given notice that they are folding and will no longer hold gambling premises permits within the city of Coon Rapids as of February 2023. So we're just looking to receive the gambling expenditure report for 2022.
Mr. Mayor? Just a clarification. I mixed up item three with four. The $63 relates to number three, which you'll discuss later. It's about a $1,200 difference. If I could just make that clear. My apologies.
That was item four, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just correcting that I said it was a $63 difference. It's about $1,200, which...
Oh, I get it. I get it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
My apologies for that confusion.
I thought I was on the wrong agenda item.
You are not. I was. My apologies.
All right. So item five on this evening's agenda, which is the second one on the consent agenda, is to accept sidewalk and snow storage easement from Anoka Ramsey Community College. A planned Anoka County project proposes reconstruction of the existing Mississippi Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard intersection, which includes replacement of the existing traffic signal system and reconstruction of the existing sidewalk along the Anoka Ramsey Community College Professional Training Center building, or right across the street from McDonald's for those playing at home. A joint powers agreement will be submitted to the council for approval in the future and before any work begins. The city maintains this section of sidewalk, and it was determined during the project design process that the city does not currently have an easement for this sidewalk. The proposed easement is 10 feet wide and extends along the southeast side of the property. The existing sidewalk is only located from Coon Rapids Boulevard to the entrance driveway for the Training Center Building. There are no plans to extend the sidewalk along Mississippi Boulevard at this time. Well, that makes sense then, because then the trail that goes off from there is the college's trail from the parking lot down to their parking lot. Okay. So we're looking to accept an easement for the sidewalk and snow storage purposes from Anoka Ramsey Community College along the Anoka Ramsey Community College Professional Training Center Building, located on the southwest corner of Mississippi Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve the contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids for the ICWC program. And this is, the ICWC crew generally works under the supervision of the public works supervisory staff and completes a wide variety of projects for the city. They have been a valuable asset to the community and have provided thousands of hours of labor at a very reasonable cost. The city's current contract expires on March 31, 2023, and the terms of this contract run from April 1, 2023, and March, I'm sorry, from April 1, 2023 to, to March 31, 2025. Thank you. The word ended. It was completely throwing me off. And the proposed fee is $210,000 with biannual payments of $52,500 due in April and October 2023 and 2024. Staff believes this program provides cost-effective maintenance services to supplement public works personnel and recommends the city council consider approval of the two-year contract to continue the institution-community work crew program. So we're looking to approve the updated contract between the Minnesota Department of Corrections and the city of Coon Rapids for the two-year institution-community work crew ICWC program. Item seven is to adopt Resolution 23-36, adopting the 2023 SCORE recycling grant funds from Anoka County. And Coon Rapids is entitled to receive reimbursement for eligible activities up to $216,626. And this amount includes $196,626 for total population and household allotment for the recycling program and $20,000 for facility improvements. The 2023 recycling budget was approved by the city council in December and included the SCORE funds for the same amount. So we're just looking to adopt Resolution 23-36, accepting the 2023 SCORE grant funds from Anoka County. And then item eight, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-35, approving parks and recreation commission appointments. The Parks and Recreation Commission supports the appointment of two new members to the commission. That would be Steve Sweeney and John Housechild. Each applied for the Parks and Recreation Commission. After discussion with the applicants and both attending recent meetings, the Parks and Recreation Commission supports appointments of Steve Sweeney and John Housechild to fill vacancies with a term ending in 2024. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-35, appointing Steve Sweeney and John Housechild to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And that's our consent agenda this evening.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that is adopted. And we are up to item nine, which is to hold a public hearing and assessment hearing. Consider Resolution 23-1/6A ordering project and 23-1/8 approving plans and specifications and authorization of bids. Mr. Hanson, welcome.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight to provide a presentation about our proposed 2023 street reconstruction program. So I'll step through some slides and then allow the opportunity to hold the public hearing. So a little bit of background in terms of our street reconstruction program for 2023. The streets that we have proposed for reconstruction this year were first, were last rated rather as deficient or poor in the spring of 2021. That was the last time we did a real thorough update of our pavement ratings. Staff also consider the streets where our public works department are spending their most time patching potholes, and that's where we recommend for where we go on these projects. And then just a note, staff first met with council in June of 2022 to first talk about this proposed program. So that brings us here tonight. So the proposed project for 2023, four and a half miles of local streets, starting at 126 Avenue going all the way north to and including 131st Avenue, and that's between Coon Creek Boulevard and Shenandoah Boulevard. So it's another area of the Oaks of Shenandoah neighborhoods. And then we plan to completely resurface all of the asphalt. So these will be brand-new streets. All of the damaged curb and gutter, concrete curb and gutter will be replaced, repairing storm sewer catch basins and sanitary manhole castings. Also, we will be replacing any plugged fire hydrants. These are hydrants that exist where the bottoms exist within the groundwater table. They tend to have more maintenance issues over time, and they have to be plugged out because they can't drain, or they have to be pumped out, rather. The project also proposes to construct a new concrete six-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of 131st Avenue between Coon Creek Boulevard to, and then east of Shenandoah Boulevard to the Wildwood Trailhead connection. And then lastly, we will be upgrading all of the city's street lights to LED standards. So the schedule for the project, we had two open houses so far for the project. One was held on October 12 of last year, and then we had another one this past January to answer questions and concerns from property owners. Tonight, we are here on February 21 to hold the public and assessment hearings and then approve the project if the council desires, and then ordering the advertisements for bids. The next step in the process would be to recommend award of the contract. So after this step, we'll go out for contractor bids, and then by the April 4 meeting, we'll come back to you with a recommendation for contract award. And then the next step after that would be to adopt the assessments, and that would be proposed on May 2. We will also have an informational meeting within a nearby park of the project, Bison Park, to inform the residents of the schedule, the exact schedule that we'll have. At that point, we'll have a contractor on board, and we'll have that contractor at that meeting in the park. We'll be able to answer questions about all the details of the phasing of the project at that point. And then from May through September will be the project construction. There will be letters that will contain all of the project contacts, schedule, frequently asked questions that will be mailed to the residents before we do any work. There are also weekly updates that go out every Friday. People can sign up on our website to be able to receive those. And then new this year, we're going to have a process for text messaging people. If something comes up in construction, then we'll be able to notify them rather quickly. If there's a late water turn-on or something like that, we'll be able to send that message out very quickly. The estimated project costs for the project are total 6.1 million. That is funded through a number of different city funds and enterprise funds, and then special assessments. The 2023 assessment rates, as recommended in the feasibility report that was approved last December, are for a single-family resident, $2,365. All single-family properties are assessed the same amount. Doesn't matter if it's a corner lot or an interior lot. Everybody pays the same. Duplex townhomes, multifamily properties are assessed at the lineal front footage, and that's at a rate of $31 per front foot. Commercial properties are at $59 a front foot, and then industrial properties are at $75. The latter two, there are none in this particular proposed project. So there's a few different ways that property owners can pay their assessments. We do not send out an invoice or a bill after the public hearing notice. So residents have a few different options, and we recognize that these projects come up and often unexpectedly for property owners. So we do offer different means to be able to pay the assessment. The first option is to pay the assessment between May 3 and June 3, and there would not be any interest charged. The second option would be after June 3, up until November 15 of this year, you'd pay the assessment plus any accrued interest. And then the last option would be to simply do nothing. The assessment will automatically roll over to the property taxes, which would start payment in 2024. And that does accrue interest at a rate this year of 5.15%. So that's a little bit higher than what we've seen in the past, but that's reflective of kind of where the overall market is. And then if one were to do that, and it is a single-family property, that would amount to about $320 per year, each year for 10 years until that assessment is paid off. So that's what it would take to pay it off with interest over that 10-year period. So we did do some research with our neighbors to find out what other cities are assessing. And just to give some perspective, we still are at the lower end of the spectrum in terms of special assessments that all of our neighbors are doing. Notification forms. I include this as a reminder to the public that's here tonight or watching on TV. We have notification forms that we put out on doors, typically they're on the front door for water shut-offs. So we do that 24 hours in advance of any planned water shut-off. And then if we're going to impact the access to a property, we also have notifications for that. So the water shut-off notice is a pink tag typically on the front door, and then the construction access impact is on the right side of the screen. Both of them are put on the front door typically. So if residents go in the side door of their home, they need to be mindful of the front door. There are reconstruction videos that we have on our city website. They take property owners through the process and then also answer a number of frequently asked questions that we get. So far, staff have not received any written objections to the project or the assessment. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has. Otherwise, I will turn it over to you, Mayor, to hold the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Councilmember Carlson?
Just to clarify, Mr. Hanson, is this the first reconstruction of those neighborhoods west of Shenandoah?
That's correct.
Since those have been around for 30 some years.
Yep, that's correct.
My other question, Mr. Hanson, was if folks decide to wait until up to November 15 to pay, is that interest, is that the same? Is that a 5.15%?
Yes, that is the interest rate.
Same interest rate for there as it would be if folks waited?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Similar question like Mr. Hanson or Mr. Carlson's, but of the 4.5 miles that are being redone in those areas, is it all the full-depth reclamation? And could you explain to everyone exactly what that means? We're getting brand-new roads.
Yes, thank you for that question. That's a great question. The process of full-depth reclamation is when we grind into the pavement section, into the existing gravel base. But in addition, on some of the streets, we're going to be doing some additional subcutting below that because we are putting back a thicker pavement section than what is there today. So we have, on average, about two inches of asphalt on these streets. We're putting back three inches with the same gravel section. So in order to do that, sometimes we have to excavate down a little bit. But the process is, it's a brand-new street for all practical purposes. Brand-new asphalt, brand-new street.
Very good. Mr. Hanson, last year, over in Ward for the project, we had a lot of complaints, a lot of issues over there. Will that contractor be bidding on it again? Do we, if he's bidding again, do you think he's got his issues resolved?
Well, we've worked with that contractor in the past on projects previous to last year. And, you know, we always get a number of complaints about every contractor. So it's hard to exclude a contractor solely based on that. But certainly, if that particular contractor returned to us in 2023, we have to pick the low bidder, and it takes a lot to be able to exclude the low bidder. You know, we would be obviously working with them to make sure that things are well communicated, and we have a good project.
And I don't know that it rose to the level where we would try and reject his bids. I just know there were a disproportionate number of complaints last year compared to other years. Because there's always some complaint, or some complaints, but it just seemed like there were a lot last year.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, you know, there was also a lot of confusion in the coordination with the post office. And I think maybe we learned some lessons last year about things that we can maybe do with the post office a little differently with the different mail carriers and, you know, and the contractor put the wrong notices on people's doors where the mail was going to be. And so there were just a lot of issues with communication.
We had two different projects, but one, it was really one big project, and they were separated by some high-traffic thoroughfares. But in this case here, we have kind of one grouping, logical grouping of streets with all in the same area. So we're certainly going to stage all of the construction to allow everybody to access their properties as they do today, and then allow the concrete to cure. And sometimes people are going to have to park in the streets. But, you know, we plan to communicate as much as we can. That's why we also have the new text option.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson before we carry representative?
Yeah, I just want to give credit. I was talking about this in our work session before. I've driven in, for my work right now, I drive all over different cities, and we have just a great product here. So credit to the engineering division for the reasonable low cost that we assess to the homeowners, and then the great product that we continue to maintain here in Coon Rapids. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson? Hearing none. We will open the, let me get back to the top of the page here. We will open the public hearing and assessment hearing in Project 23-1/6A and 23-1/8. Is there anybody here to address council for the public hearing and assessment hearing for the street reconstruction project? Mr. Brody?
Although the audience seems rather limited, I do want to remind folks, as Mr. Hanson pointed out, we haven't received any written objections to the assessment. This would be your final opportunity to do that. So if you are, you should be here, and you should be presenting that now. Obviously, the public hearings also to comment on the project as well, but I just wanted to make sure that that assessment piece was just another reminder.
Okay, very good. And I assume we don't have anybody on Zoom? We're not doing Zoom tonight?
Correct, Mayor. There is nobody on. We are simulcasting on Zoom, but there are no attendees.
Okay.
However you want to say that.
Very good. All right. So we'll throw it out one more time for if there's anybody here to address the public hearing and assessment hearing for the street construction project, 23-1/6A and 23-1/8. Nobody here. We're going to close the public hearing and assessment hearing. And let's see. So council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-1/6A ordering the improvement.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Grisgoviac and a second by Carlson. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? You got your supermajority, Mr. Brody.
Four fifths.
All right, four fifths. There you go. All right. We've got one more to move forward here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-1/8 approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Second?
Motion by Grisgoviac and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Ooh, he's already gone. Thanks, Mr. Hanson. All right. So item 10 is to consider Resolution 23-2/9, awarding a contract for Robinson Drive and Creek Meadow Drive mill and overlay. Mr. Hanson, you want to cover this from there, or do you want me to read your bullet point here?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor and council. So staff had developed plans and specifications for a mill and overlay of Robinson Drive from 111th Avenue. So it's right out in front of City Hall here, north to Hanson Boulevard, and then also Creek Meadow Drive and 114th Avenue from Robinson Drive to Exion Street. So it'll be a two-inch mill and overlay. We will also be replacing all of the regulatory signs within the project corridor. We received a low bid from North Valley, and they have done a number of projects for us in the past. They've always performed very well. In fact, they did the 2022 mill and overlay project of Hanson Boulevard and 105th Avenue. That turned out very well for us. So we're pleased to recommend them for contract award.
Very good. Mr. Hanson, is any of this a heavier overlay, or a heavier mill and overlay because it's feeding an industrial park? I know the trucks aren't supposed to be using Coon Creek Boulevard there. Or is it just our standard, or standard mill and overlay?
It's a little bit thicker than I would say our standard. We don't really have a standard, per se. I would say for a higher-trafficked volume road such as these are, we like to do a two-inch mill and overlay. We're somewhat limited by the existing pavement thicknesses. Out there, we have four, five inches or so of asphalt. So we don't really want to go more than two, two and a half. We're recommending two.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Mr. Hanson, approximately how many miles of road does this include?
That's a good question. I believe it's about a half a mile.
Okay. So it's about the same cost as what we're doing in the Oaks of Shenandoah, a little bit, a little less because we're not doing the full depth. That's what I'm seeing?
Yeah, yep.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-2/9, awarding a contract to North Valley Incorporated in the amount of $449,161.70 for the Robinson Drive and Creek Meadow Drive 114th Avenue Mill and Overlay Project.
Second?
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Geisler. And I think I figured it out. If he would have known the answer, that would have been a great question. But he didn't know the answer, so you only got, it's a good question. Yeah. Is there any further discussion on this? Is there any further discussion on this one? Hearing these are such a great value. The mill and overlays are such a great value and it's so non disruptive. You get in, get it done. They got new streets to enjoy and it's great.
One of the advantages to bidding this in the the winter time like this is and and doing the work when we have it scheduled is it's paving is often at the end of every project. And so we have paving crews that are looking for work in May. So this is a real good time to to get a lot of eager competitors to do the work.
Sure, very good. Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Grisikoviac, I just did a little calculation. It's about a mile and a third.
Oh, so it's a considerable, okay. So it was a great question.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisikoviac.
I I appreciate that comment because we it is a good value. It's we've always seen it to be a good value, but this didn't seem as good a value as in years past. And now I can still doing the mental math and was going to ask the question. So thanks for clarification.
All right. Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We're on to item eleven, consider Resolution twenty-two dash six sub nine, awarding a contract for Safe Routes to School project on Northdale Boulevard at Coon Rapids High School. Project twenty-two dash six. This is all the Mr. Hanson show tonight. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so Mayor and counsel, this is this agenda item is for contract award for the Safe Routes to School grant project that I think we first came to the council with last year. A couple of different times for support of the grant and then perhaps that might have been the only one. But in any case, we have bid the project. We've gotten a low bid from Tyzak Concrete. We have done work with this contractor before and they have performed well. The improvements include flashing pedestrian flasher signs at Wren Street and then kind of where a little bit further to the east of where the existing more antiquated yellow flashing sign is today, a couple of dynamic speed display signs and then ADA improvements. There will also be a curb bump out where the the pedestrian flasher sign is kind of at the front of the high school. So that will help reduce the crosswalk width. But we recommend contract award to Tyzak. We will be doing the work or the the work is planned to take place when school is out between June and August. We've been working with the school district every step of the way on the project. They're going to have to do some improvements on their side of the property to line up with what we're doing, but we've been working with them on that.
Councilmember Ray Roward.
So you talked about the curb bump outs. I'm thinking that's the same as what was put in on the northern section of Foley Boulevard where at a crossing it narrows.
That's correct.
It is so important for safety. I was actually before that was done, sitting there at Foley Boulevard trying to turn left and a and a car was stopped for a young student crossing the street. And another car I'm watching goes to go around the car that stopped for the the kid. And I'm screaming, no, don't go. But of course, they can't hear me. And thankfully, the kid didn't make it past the car when that car went by or they would have been run over. So by having those bump outs, you can't go around a car that's waiting for a pedestrian to cross the road. And that's that's really going to be great. So, yeah, and that that area needs safety improvements. So with that, I'll make a resolution, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-two dash six sub nine, awarding a contract to Tyzak Concrete Incorporated for the Safe Routes to School Northdale Boulevard improvements at Coon Rapids High School project as described herein.
Second.
Motion by Ray Roward and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Mr. Stemwell first.
I have a feeling Mr. Hammer and I are maybe going to mention the same thing. Counsel, I was just going to note that under new business, item number fifteen, there is a companion resolution or a memorandum related to the joint powers agreement with MinDOT. And those these two things are tied together, given this one fell under bid openings. It's a little awkward. But I'd say just keep in mind, or if there are any concerns about the JPA, you might want to sort of consider that now as you're approving the bid award.
I was going to mention the same thing. So item number fifteen has two agreements. One is with Anoka County for shared maintenance responsibility and the other was with MinDOT for the funding piece. So it's exactly what I wanted to touch on. If there are any questions about the funding component or how this gets done, we may want to have that discussion before you award a contract so you're comfortable with where the dollars are coming from and who's responsible for this ongoing maintenance.
So I read through this and I didn't have a concern. Should I have a concern?
No. Just wanted to be clear. Mayor, council, we don't have a concern, however, we would hate to get to item fifteen and go, wait a minute, you know, this isn't what I expected. So we just wanted to point that out under bid openings before we got to that.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisikoviac.
I was actually going to ask the question because it didn't come up in the discussion on this, that the funding for the project is from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So if you don't mind, if Mr. Hammer could talk about that funding just for a moment, please.
Certainly, Councilmember Grisikoviac, counsel. We did do this application last summer, I believe. So we were successful and it was about four hundred and eighty some thousand dollars. The city and county participated and paid for the engineering work because engineering work wasn't reimbursable. So we split about sixty thousand dollars between Anoka County and the city to get to where we are today. So we've got roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars available to us under that grant. Obviously, we got great bids. It's even better than our estimate. So they are fully funding the three hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. And one of the questions I had asked was, well, we received a grant for four fifty and our numbers are only at three oh eight. With every project, there's typically change orders. You never know what you're going to run into. So I wanted to make sure that there was some flexibility. Could we build in some ability, some contingency? That's not how MinDOT functions. So what they've told us is you're well below what you're awarded. We have to go with your low bid. We can't put anything else in. However, we'll review any requests that come in. We believe we'll be able to make you whole, but there is a little bit that if we have some overages, that we may be responsible for those costs. But the JPA with Anoka County says they will split those with us fifty fifty.
Mr. Mayor, in follow up, does that mean that do we get reimbursed for the plans and specifications, the engineering that we split between Anoka County and the city?
Councilmember Grisikoviac, it's only construction dollars, engineering inspections. That sort of is non reimbursable. So we will have to pay all the costs upfront and then we seek reimbursement, but it's only for the construction costs. What we paid for the design and inspections will be our costs.
Okay. Overall, fantastic and safety improvement for the community. I just wanted to clarify those questions a little bit. So thank you for that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And now we're on to new business and item, let's just call it twelve point one would be item three. And that's to receive lawful gambling report and authorize payment to Community Strength Foundation. Let me go back to.
Wait a minute.
Item, yeah. Okay. So let's see. When the Community Strength Foundation was established in two thousand and twelve, the city council indicated its intent to contribute ninety percent of charitable gambling revenues to the foundation. And we're just being asked to accept the lawful gambling payments report for two thousand and twenty-two and authorize the two thousand and twenty-two payment to the foundation. The city collects five percent of all lawful gambling revenue generated within the city. And the city council, again, has agreed to disperse ninety percent of the charitable gambling revenue the city collects to the Community Strength Foundation. In two thousand and twenty-two, the total lawful gambling contribution to the city equaled eighty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents, making the ninety percent contribution equal to seventy-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents. The two thousand and twenty-two cumulative fund balance for the amount the city retains from gambling, from lawful gambling is currently twenty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. As authorized by state statute, these funds may be used for projects deemed appropriate by the council. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Grisikoviac? I'm sorry, Geisler. I got a G in there. I was trying to read at the same time.
So I had asked to to remove this from the consent agenda. You know, the Community Strength Foundation has been around just over ten years. They do a fabulous job and work with with the community. One of the things, though, that has started to nag at me a little bit is, I mean, this year it's nearly eighty thousand dollars that we give to the foundation. And one of the things that I want to add when I make the motion here is that request that we get a financial report from the the foundation on an annual basis to make sure that there's transparency of how the funds that we provide to them through this allocation of the charitable gambling funds are used within the community, to make sure that we as a city and a council understand how that's being spent and that it's, you know. We see it in our organizations and what they're doing, but just to have that formalization to make sure that there aren't any questions, I think, would make sense for both them and for us. So with that, I would make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-two five percent lawful gambling payments report and authorize the expenditure of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents to the Community Strength Foundation with the stipulation that an annual financial report is provided to the city.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. So we're at discussion. A motion by Geisler, a second by Ray Roward. Did you s how did how did you end that? Did you did you stipulate the money is only going to go to them if they give us the report? I guess I just wanted to make sure that we're able to give them the funds this year.
Yeah, you know, I I think with, you know, we can ask Mr. Brody with the expectation or how we can maybe word that. I think it's appropriate that if we're giving the funds, that we have an accountability coming back to the city of the fund, right?
And I'm not questioning that.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that the language in the motion is going to work so that we're not tying up the funds this year. And I kind of would, I'd like to, I guess, I get the emotion back again.
Mayor, council, we were just sort of discussing, you know, if the if the intent of the motion was that for a financial report of twenty twenty-three expenses such that approximately this time next year, we get a financial report reflective of the previous period?
Showing what we're giving them now. So give me the report on how you spent it.
Okay, that that would be my understanding is first quarter of next year, we get a report about twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, all right. That shouldn't be an issue. I mean, they track everything and transfers is good. All right. Is there any further discussion on this one? Then we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Yeah, it almost would just say it all went to fireworks, but not quite. A big chunk, yeah. All right. No, and actually I shouldn't I shouldn't it's I shouldn't minimize it. I mean, they've got the rocky patch, the tree lighting, the there's so many events that they're they they not only provide funding for, they provide bodies and volunteers for. It's a very, very vital organization.
Organization. And I just think it's to make sure that everybody's safe and protected, that we understand where the money's going and how it's being spent.
Transparency is a good thing. All right, very good. Item twelve, consider a purchase agreement of twenty-three XX Main Street and adopt Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven, amending the twenty twenty-three Parks Improvement Fund budget. Mr. Brown?
Yes, good evening. And you had discussed this item a bit at last week's work session. Based on that discussion, we decided to proceed with this agenda item. So this is a piece of property about one point two seven acres in size on the north side of Main Street, generally between Rome, uh, excuse me, Shenandoah Boulevard and Coon Creek Boulevard, adjacent to some existing city parkland, other publicly owned property. We've had some conversations with the property owner because it's a challenging piece to develop adjacent to other property the city owns. We felt it made made sense to negotiate a potential purchase. We've negotiated a sale price of fifteen thousand dollars. So in addition to considering the purchase agreement, you're also asked to consider a resolution amending the budget for the Park Improvement Fund. And that is where the fifteen thousand dollars would come from.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Brown? Seems like one point two seven acres for fifteen thousand dollars is a pretty good buy.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement for the property at twenty-three XX Main Street and authorize staff to execute any documents as necessary to close on the property and move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven, amending the twenty twenty-three Park Improvement Fund budget.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisikoviac.
Just a quick question. Does this parcel then automatically get added to Bison Park? In other words, does Bison Park formally become one point two seven acres larger or does this parcel just become part of city property?
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, council, I would suggest the latter, that, I mean, at this point, the park boundaries haven't necessarily been extended. I mean, it's it's functionally in some ways a part of the park, but there are no improvements in the area at this time, nor are there any planned in the near future. So it's really not going to function like a park property, although it's adjacent to all the other city properties we own. But it has separate boundaries, separate from Bison Park.
Well, and the reason I ask is that it, I mean, it's, of course, it's connected to Bison Park, it's adjacent to Bison Park. So is it, you know, become public property for residents?
I mean, I I will say, yes, it is public property. It is not a very accessible property. There is no place to park very easily there. The existing trail network within Bison Creek Park ends quite a ways to the north and east of there. So while could someone, you know, walk onto that property, that's that's certainly fine, but it's it's just hard to get to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I I think to Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Grisikoviac's point, to me, I would look at it, are we looking at changing the zoning or, you know, underlying, you know, comp plan designation and and potentially replating? You know, and because I know that there's a number of other properties along that way, you know, are we just going to leave it as its own individual parcel? It's just kind of next to the park or are we going to formally do the paperwork to replat and rezone and change the comp plan designation?
I guess I would ask, I mean, so the the purchase isn't going to be stipulated on a land use change. So it almost seems like that would be a conversation for later. Right now, we're just deciding to buy it.
Right. To me, it is a future conversation and it's just, to me, went to Commissioner Grisikoviac's question of is it going to get added? And the way it would be added is the land use designations and the plat plat change. So I was just wondering if there was any plans or are we not going to plan to do that?
Your Honor, Councilmember Geisler, our our recommendation would be to hold off on doing any of that until we had a clear idea of, you know, of adding a trailhead or other facilities down the road. Currently, the property is zoned conservancy, so aside from kind of park and open space uses, there's not a lot that can be done with it.
Okay.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisikoviac.
I mean, no matter what we do, that I think the value is there for the city to buy this. And I know the county really wants to restrict access on driveways onto Main Street anyway, that main thoroughfare. So I'm in favor of of making this purchase.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item thirteen is to consider Resolution twenty-three dash five sub eight, approving approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for annual street maintenance program. This has been a very effective thing since two thousand and four. Several area cities have participated in a regional street maintenance materials contract for the purpose of obtaining competitive bids for routine street maintenance services. And we're being requested to approve plans and specifications and order an advertisement for bids for the twenty twenty-three program. Mr. Hanson, it's got some economy of scale here.
Yes, Mayor and and council. So this this agenda item is for approving the plan specifications, ordering ad for bid for our typical routine maintenance measures. that we, we band together with other north metro cities, even cities that are now in, in Ramsey County and, and Hennepin County, um, coming together to bid the project as one to get an economy of scale price for a lot of the routine work, like pavement markings, crack sealing, fog sealing, seal coating, work like that. Each city pays the contractor for its work separately on its own, um, and it has provided a great maintenance program for all of the cities that participate in this for many years.
So as this has expanded to sixteen cities as the lead agency, is Coon Rapids doing a disproportionate amount of work, or it's, it's not that big a deal?
Well, we have an administrative fee that we charge the other cities to do the work. I wouldn't say we're doing a disproportionate. There are cities that might have more quantities within the, the bid package than, than what we might do, but we, we do have a, we do get compensated for it.
We are getting reimbursed. All right, Mr. Hammer?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll add that we get, we get a percentage of the quantities done by each municipality. As we were going through it this year, however, I was looking back, and we haven't touched those percentages since this was first initiated back long ago. So we're currently now looking at what our costs are into it, so we make sure that we're increasing with inflation and times as well, that we're making sure we're, we're getting our, our fair share.
Seems like that's the beauty of doing a percentage. As everything goes up, that does go up, but, all right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 23 dash five sub eight approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for the 2023 Street Maintenance Program.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak?
Just a quick question. Not being familiar with this program from past years, is there a process in place by which we can actually see what the quality is of this work that's done on a year-by-year basis and see and verify that it's actually being done up to standard?
Uh, we do perform inspections at the time that the work is being done, and we do also do materials testing on, on the, the work or the, the product that's placed. We also have a warranty through the contract for any defective work as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and it's not the same contractor. I mean, it's multiple contractors that bid on this, so the next process will be awarding those bids based on, those contracts based on their bids, correct?
That's correct. It's, it's a fairly select few different contractors that seem to alternate from year to year, so typically, we're familiar with them. We also have a process for responsible contractors that bid our projects are the ones that we can only award to, recommend awarding to.
Mr. Hammer?
I'll also add that it, it's our design standards, it's our specifications, the other municipalities review those as well. We are only responsible for the inspection of, of ours within our city. We don't have to go to Mounds View, we don't have to go to Andover. They're responsible to agree to our specifications and hold those contractors accountable with their own inspections and such. So we handle what's in our backyard, we just administer it for others.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item fourteen is to consider Resolution 23 dash four sub eight accepting plans and specifications for miscellaneous trail reconstruction and authorize solicitation of bids. Mr. Hanson?
Mayor and Council, this agenda item is for our 2023 miscellaneous trail rehabilitation improvements, and, and those are, uh, so we have a portion of Coon Creek Regional Trail that exists between Yellow Pine Street and Northdale Boulevard that we are recommending reconstruction of, so that would be grinding up the asphalt pavement and repaving it. And then another section of trail, the Sand Creek Trail, we propose to realign a small portion of it just south of Sycamore Circle. And, and the reason that we're doing that, we have a fairly steep grade that comes off of the cul-de-sac street there where the trail is, that goes down to a bridge that crosses, a pedestrian bridge that crosses Sand Creek, and there's also a very sharp horizontal curve at the same spot at the bottom of a very steep grade, so we're trying to just make that more gentle and remove that horizontal curvature there. So the trail in between there, the trail connection that comes directly off, a portion of that would be removed.
Okay.
And then the work would be planned for the summer.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number 23 dash four sub eight approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for the 2023 Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction Fund.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Ray Rower. Is there, is discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Hanson, I just wanted to thank you for anything you can do for that trail. First of all, that, that trail, um, that runs from Northdale to Yellow Pine, that's a beautiful, underused trail, but that little section by Sand Creek, uh, Sand Creek, uh, boy, that's a, that's sketchy coming down that hill, so it'd be great if we could do something about that. I had a citizen call me a couple of years ago about that, expressing concern because some of the sand was washing down there, making it just a little bit more interesting.
Yes.
I appreciate anything you can do down there.
Interesting.
All right. Um, okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We're item to item fifteen, consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County and MinDOT Agreement for Safe Routes to School Improvements, Northdale Boulevard at Coon Rapids High School, Project 22 dash six. Mr. Hanson, anything that you want to hit on that, that Mr. Hammer and Mr. Stemwell didn't already warn us about?
Well, not too much. I would just reiterate, this is the agreement that we would have with Anoka County to operate and maintain the pedestrian flasher signs, as well as the dynamic speed display signs, as well as with MinDOT for use of the funds to construct this. The city would be responsible for plowing the sidewalks as we do today along Northdale Boulevard. We will continue to do that. We're also responsible for some of the operational costs, and the county will bill that to us on the same basis that they bill other signals that they also operate and maintain our, on our behalf.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to approve the execution of the joint power agreement with Anoka County for the construction and maintenance of safe routes to school, safety improvements on County State Aid Highway 11, Northdale Boulevard, in the vicinity of Coon Rapids High School. I'll also move that we approve the MinDOT Agreement for Usage of SRTS, the Safe Routes to School Grant Funds.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion on this, or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item sixteen is to consider Resolution number 23 dash seven sub eight accepting plans and specifications for the 2023 Well Rehabilitation and Authorizing Solicitation of Bids. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a continuation of our annual program whereby we basically touch every well pump and booster pump on an eight-year cycle. The one thing that's added this year is we haven't found that we've done our backwash pumps anytime probably in the past fifteen years. So because we always assume the worst, and we always look at numbers that we expect are going to be over budget but are always under budget because the fact that we're touching these on a regular basis, we have confidence that we believe we can get those backwash pumps in there for the same price that we would have budgeted for anything else. So we're looking to do wells 13, 15, 21, booster pump number two, as well as the backwash pumps at both plants. Because there's some longer lead times, we're going to split the schedule into two pieces whereby they're going to handle the, the pumps in our wells and get those done before the peak pumping season, and then we won't do the backwash pumps until fall and get those done before the end of the year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but we'd like to get this project out for bid.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Hammer?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 23 dash seven sub eight accepting plans and specifications for the 2023 Well Rehabilitation and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item seventeen is to consider approving implementation memorandum of understanding and receive the Energy Action Plan recommendations. Um, Mr. Stemwell, anything we've, I suppose this actually hasn't been presented at a council meeting before.
Mayor, Council, that's correct. Ms. Darrell Hovland is here. If you have any questions for her, if you'd like her to provide a brief overview, this was discussed at last week's work session after initially being discussed at a council workshop session back in December, but certainly if there's anything from a public purview standpoint, Council would like to discuss, we can answer those questions, provide that overview.
All right. Um, is there a presentation you wanted, you want to do?
If you would like, I have a few slides I can run through.
Sure.
All right. So the Energy Action Plan is an effort that we started on to collaboratively create a work plan for sustainability with the city and to help our residents and businesses save money and identify what our most immediate opportunities in this arena are. The plan was co-created with an energy action team that is listed here and incorporated our utility account managers, different community stakeholders, and council members and commissioners, and involved five different planning meetings that took place from May to September last year. The meetings were sort of a large brainstorming session to run through different ideas, throw things at the wall, see what stuck, and create a collaborative document. What we ended up with was the Energy Action Team recommended three focus areas here, energy efficiency, renewable energy, and electric vehicle preparedness, and they really wanted to make sure that the city, uh, spoke to a wide variety of audiences with their efforts in this plan, so they wanted to include outreach to residents, businesses, the city itself, institutions, multifamily buildings, and educational institutions as well. The goal that the plan notes is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions thirty-five percent by 2030, uh, which would allow the city to avoid spending almost five million dollars on energy over the course of that time period. The plan's structure is sort of this pyramid. It, it has the goal at the top, the focus areas underneath, and then associated strategies and tactics for implementation under that. The plan framing for you today is that the plan is sort of the results of the work group's efforts, a report and recommendations from them, and then the memorandum of understanding is what the city chooses to, uh, commit to implementing with assistance from the Partners in Energy Team, and that will include continued eighteen months of free assistance from Partners in Energy and is a non-binding commitment from us. So this sort of gives the overview. We had four to six months of planning, we'll have eighteen to twenty months of implementation with Partners in Energy. And the memorandum of understanding was edited to incorporate the feedback that we received from you all last week and to enshrine the city's commitment to implement the energy efficiency and renewable energy portions of the Energy Action Plan. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have, but also just wanted to acknowledge the Energy Action Team and the work that they put into that over the past year.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Hovland?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Um, I just want to give a huge thank you to all of the community partners and stakeholders involved. I was part of this, um, planning process with the Energy Action Team, and it included, like Ms. Darrell Hovland said, council members, city staff, representatives from our Coon Rapids High School, the Anoka Ramsey Community College, Canexus Center Point, the Chamber, other local institutions, and all these folks put their time and energy into the plan, and really a special thank you to Excel Energy for having this program and for your knowledge and leadership on it. And with the collaboration that we had, we came up with a lot better plan than any of us would have alone, and what's really great about is it focuses on education and communication and outreach, so we can support our own residents and our businesses right here in Coon Rapids, connecting them with programs and resources, grant opportunities that already exist. And intentionally, I just want to bring up one more quick thing, that phase one was really intentionally done first so that we can reduce usage, which is going to save our residents and businesses money, so things like upgrading insulation and HVAC and what's out there as far as programs and grants and incentives that can help them save money. So with that, I would like to make a motion to receive the Energy Action Plan and authorize the city to enter into the implementation MOU with Excel Energy that moves forward with two of the three recommended focus areas, energy efficiency and renewable energy.
Second.
We have a motion by Ray Rower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Um, I too participated in this, and I would have loved if we could have moved forward with all three. I know that from our work sessions that we didn't have a consensus and ability to move forward with all three. And so from my perspective, I want to get us started. I want to get us moving. Points one and points two are viable, they're helping our residents, they're making us more efficient, and so let's move with this. The electric vehicles, my personal opinion is that they're coming, they will be here, and we can revisit that, you know, in next year or the year after to see if, at what point do we want to potentially look at that portion of the plan? So I want to make sure that it's not forgotten, it's not deleted, it's there, but right now we're going to focus on one and two and know that that's, gets us moving and gets us started.
Yeah, and from my place, I just thought it was, those were the important focuses for our residents, were the energy efficiency and the renewable energy, you know, where we're at right now. But, all right, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. Item eighteen is to consider adoption of Resolution 23 dash thirty-nine approving the 2023 Police Captain Labor Agreement. Lori Roth?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We ask you to consider and adopt Resolution 23 thirty-nine, which is the police captain's contract. The contract, for the most part, is simply formalizing what they already receive. In terms of the compensation piece, we conducted a, a compens, uh, market survey, we looked at internal equity, uh, we looked at some compression issues, and through a very positive negotiation process, we came to an agreement with the union for a five-step, uh, compensation pay band to include a three percent COLA increase effective January one, 2023, and then a one percent, uh, COLA increase effective July first, 2023, which is consistent with what others have received. Any questions?
So this contract ends already this, the end of this year. Does that line up with the other contracts that we just approved? Because I, I thought we just set contracts with all of our bargaining groups, and are all of those done the end of this year as well?
That's correct, Mayor and Council. This will coincide with our other four union groups, and so we'll be renegotiating later this year with all groups going into 2024, which actually is beneficial in some ways, but it's a lot of work, so I appreciate Ms. Ross's efforts in that regard.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 23 dash thirty-nine approving the labor agreement between the city and the law enforcement labor services, Local Number Five Twenty-eight, representing the police captains and the memorandum of
captains, and the memorandum of understanding extending the health care savings plan.
Second?
Motion by Carlson and a second by Ray Rower. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting? Not again, huh? Not tonight? All right. So we're going to move past the open mic, and we have two reports on previous open mics, and one of them was Ms. Voight, 94th Avenue, concerned about the ski trails in the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park not being groomed last year or this year. And staff reached out to Anoka County Parks and learned that the county did groom trails at the Coon Rapids Dam last year in the north loop of trails. The county was delayed in getting established due to tree removal, but the trails were in place for most of the winter. They did not groom the south loop due to needing to close the bridge over Coon Creek. Additionally, over the last five to six years, the county has been monitoring trail usage at the Coon Rapids Dam via pass sales, groomer observations, feedback, and public requests. They are seeing a significant drop in the use of the ski trails at the Coon Rapids Dam, which aligns with the general decrease in participation of cross-country skiing within the metro area. According to the county, there has been a significant increase in winter walking trail use and requests for more access to plowed walking trails. County park staff used this information to make a determination this year to provide more walking access to accommodate the changing recreational use in that area, especially with the new homes that were put in the Port River Walk area. The county will evaluate at the end of the season to see if accommodations or adjustments need to be made moving forward, and a copy of this report has been sent to the resident. So, Councilmember Geisler?
Just one side note to that. Just after we received this, I also got a note from a resident about the trails in the park, and I got additional information. And basically, the core piece is they don't plow anything that's an ag lime or natural surface in the trails. So if you're used to walking those in the summer, they aren't going to be plowed in the winter, they will only plow the actual paved trails. And so that was a question that came back, and I just kind of wanted to add that to what they're saying now about how they aren't grooming the cross-country ski trails because people were walking on them, that they're only going to be working on clearing the paved trails in that park.
So it seems like they should be able to groom the ag trails then, because they don't, that's not plowing, that's just grooming. I don't know, let's not get into it. It's a county thing. If you've got a, if you have, if you have a preference here, reach out to the county, let them know what you want. All right, and then item 20 was Mr. Kikefer from Swallow Street indicated he is in support of the Energy Action Plan and the proposed solar project recently presented to the city council. He shared what he believed to be a number of environmental benefits of the plan, encouraged council to support the projects as well. This item will be discussed and considered by the council at the February 21st meeting, it was, and he will be informed that it is on the city council agenda and provide a copy of this memo, along with a memo related to the consideration. So there's no further action necessary at this time on that. And we are to other business. Do we want to give any updates? We had our street supervisor present to us at the workshop, seemed very timely with all the Snowmageddon coming in.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I'll perhaps ask Mr. Hammer to specifically speak to the snow plowing updates, but I did want to touch base on city facilities. You know, for the most part, our central facility, City Hall, Public Works, those offices will remain open, sort of contingent upon if things become terribly treacherous, you know, there may be some adjustment to that. However, I would say stay posted on some of the other more ancillary services, one of the recycling centers already made a decision to close Thursday and Friday. You may see some other things related to the senior center or Bunker Hills Golf Course, which, you know, doesn't have regular operations right now, I understand. Things of that nature, more recreational services that may need to adjust hours or scale back for a couple of days. Otherwise, if folks are looking to stop in and do business at City Hall, we may not have as many employees as we typically do, especially some of the nonessential employees may be working from home, flexing their schedules, that sort of thing, but we are going to try to make a go of it and keep the doors open, and I don't think that'll be too much of a problem. And with that, I would ask maybe Mr. Hammer to touch on our approach to snow plowing over the next few days.
Thank you, Mr. Stemwell, Council. We're expecting typical, if you want to call it typical, about six inches or so tonight, so we'll start plowing around 4:00 a.m., and we'll probably plow up until about 5:00, 6:00 o'clock tomorrow night. And we're going to do a full 12 hours plus if we need to hit those mains one more time before the evening commute, and then we'll be starting again at 2:00 a.m. on Thursday morning, and then again at 2:00 a.m. on Friday morning. So we got three consecutive full plow events. It's very likely that that will include additional work into Saturday to clean up sidewalks, trails, and be ready to go to get the kids all super excited to go back to school next week. So it's going to be a long several days, we're expecting just prolonged snowfall, and those are always the tricky ones, because we like to plow when less cars are on the road, that's the benefit of having less people on the road, but you're also confined to only getting so many hours in a day. So it's going to accumulate, it's going to blow, it's going to drift, there's going to be a lot of work to be done over probably the next week in all reality, but three consecutive early morning starts for our group.
Very good. I think so far they've only canceled school tomorrow and Thursday.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, Mr. Hammer, you know, so with this, when we've got multiple days, the roads are our priority, right? And so typically, if it's a one-day event, we'll plow, and then the next day we'll get to the sidewalks and the trails. With this, you probably likely won't get to sidewalks and trails till Saturday-ish.
That's an excellent point.
You know, and so I just want people to understand that we can't stop plowing the roads to go plow the sidewalks, right?
That is accurate.
And so the roads and roads and roads are going to be the focus, and really appreciate our team because they do a wonderful job.
Yep, and if we get the snow that they're talking about, it'll be like the fourth-most snow we've gotten.
Right.
On record, so, I mean, it's, have a little patience. Yeah, maybe go to Cub tonight, don't try and go tomorrow night.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I just want to add, stay safe out there, stay home if you can. If you have to drive, drive really slow for the conditions. The bigger and heavier your vehicle, the longer it takes to stop that vehicle, that's physics, and give a wave to your plow driver to say thank you, because they're going to be putting in a lot of long hours the next few days.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, and then, oh, just, not to minimize the golf course, the simulators are out there.
Correct. Yes, there are still going on.
Yeah, all right. Councilmember Novak?
I just want to make one more point to everyone, make sure your vehicles are off the roads. That's the last thing those guys need to do, is be curving around vehicles and leaving all that snow, trapping it there.
And your garbage cans.
And your garbage cans. The garbage trucks can reach, they don't have to be in the street, you can have them back in your driveway, and they will still be able to pick them up.
And if you're not going anywhere, you don't have to worry about driving around that garbage can in your driveway, just leave it right there at the end of your driveway, excuse not to leave the house.
All right. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.